Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining today. This March 17th meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission will now come to order. This is Commissioner Sam Libby. I'll be serving as chair today. A few announcements first. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting and all virtual meetings has been posted to the Planning Commission webpage at There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the docket listed today in the agenda during the virtual hearing for each item. I'll provide instructions at that point about when we get to each of those, how you can participate and make your comments at that point. We'll start with a roll call. If the commissioners complete, respond with present after I call your name. Sam Libby, present. Gavin McMillan.
Present.
Dave Su.
Present.
Todd, quickly. He's not here. Molly Neskey.
Present.
Alicia Norgano. Mark Bloomfield.
Present.
Sam Fitch.
Present.
And Ann Goldfarb is also not here. Alicia, I didn't hear you, but I can see you are here. I think you just didn't go off in time.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. A few reminders for the commissioners. Please identify yourself when you're speaking and speak slowly and clearly when possible. All of our votes will be roll call votes. We'll call your name first and you'll say I or abstain. Please keep your video on if you can during the hearing. Remain on mute until you have to speak. And when you begin speaking, identify yourself as a commissioner by saying this is Planning Commissioner Sam Libby. It may help to keep a participant list open so you can see who's speaking. The person will light up in the gallery or you can see who's speaking from their microphone on the participant list. Our first item here will be approval of the minutes from last month's meeting. I think we've been provided a copy. Are there any corrections, questions, or comments? Or a motion on the minutes?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I move we approve the minutes from February.
Thanks, Mark. Is there a second?
Commissioner Fitch, I have seconded that motion.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. I'll take any discussion? I don't think so. I'll take a roll call vote quickly. Sam Libby, all abstain. I wasn't here last month. Gavin McMillan.
I will also have to abstain. I was not here last month.
No, you don't need to abstain.
Then I approve.
Yeah, I realize we actually might need all of you. So thanks, Gavin. Dave Su.
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't on the commission.
Okay. Todd's not here. Molly Neskey.
Hi.
Alicia.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Sam.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Just enough, folks. Okay. Now that we've done that, we'll move on to the staff. Any staff updates?
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director of Community Planning and Permitting. I wanted to formally welcome our new Planning Commissioner David Su to the Planning Commission. This is his first meeting and joining us. So congratulations, David, on your appointment. We look forward to working with you. David did meet with CPMP staff yesterday, so we've done a brief orientation and he's jumping right in today. So appreciate you being here. Secondly, I wanted to introduce Commissioner Marta Loachman, who's been able to join us and would like to just introduce herself to the Planning Commissioner. So we thank Marta for taking the time out of her very busy schedule to join us today and meet you all. Go ahead, Marta.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Kim. I just wanted to stop in real quick again. My name is Marta Loachman. I'm Boulder County Commissioner. Recently installed in January, so I understand, David, the jump right in and get a quick orientation and start working. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for the work that you're doing, for the inputs that you're giving, for the broad reach that you are doing out in your own communities to make sure that your decisions are equitable, that they include all sectors of our Boulder County. And as you continue to do that work, I am a district representative in, or representative of district two, excuse me, among Montmartens and Allen's Park. My background is in banking and finance, real estate mortgage consulting, teaching in a couple other countries besides here in the US. And so all of those different perspectives are really important to me. My background is in housing advocacy, which we know is a really big issue here in Boulder County, not just in our state or, you know, in our region, as well as really addressing issues of equity. And that's really focusing on the financial wealth gap. It's focusing on access to resources, to local government and the barriers that exist and have existed for a really long time. So this is some pieces, the lenses that I'm using in my work. And I've met with a few of the other boards and commissions advisory boards that are supporting our county work. And so again, I just really want to thank you. If you didn't know, on this last round of applications, we received 170 applications to support Boulder County work through the commission, the planning commission like you're on and all of the other, the other 20 commissions and advisory boards. So I say that as an encouragement for you all to also include in your conversation the succession planning and the broad reach and how do you all work together to make sure that you're looking for inputs and voices from other folks. That's just part of the work that we all do on all boards that we serve on is making sure that we've got other folks that are going to be able to jump in and support our work. So again, I just want you to understand how important your role is and say thank you. And we will have another round of applications for all the different boards and advisors later this summer. So tell your friends and colleagues that there's more opportunities and really appreciate your work and of course, the staff too, that are supporting you and helping you. Reach out to them. They're here for all of us and they're doing great work. So thank you so much. I won't take any more of your time on your meeting and work today, but you're appreciated. And I apologize. I have to jump into another meeting right now. So I can't stay and just kind of listen and meet you all, but I'm hoping to do some more work with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marta.
Thanks, Kim.
Nice to meet you.
All right, that's all of the staff business that we have. So we're ready to proceed if you are.
Okay, thanks, Kim. All right, well now move into our agenda. I'm going to mix some more comments first about the public hearing process and then we'll get into our one docket item. So we have one item scheduled for today's planning commission. I'll stop now to explain the public hearing processes. This will be a docket item that has a public hearing opportunity. There will be an opportunity for the public to provide comment remotely on the items for which we've specified that. And we will take public testimony during the public hearing portion for this item. The order of presentation for this item will be to hear from staff first with their presentation, then the applicant, if they wish to present, and then we'll move on to accepting public comment from any individuals who wish to speak after that. Some people may have signed up in advance through a form on the website. We'll call on you first. If you did not sign up though, you're still welcome to speak and you can sign up in the chat, which we give directions on here in a minute. Please direct any comments you're making to the Board of Commissioners, sorry, to the Planning Commission. The chair, myself, all direct questions that arise after that to the appropriate parties if necessary. Once we've heard any comments and testimony, we'll close public hearing and we will then discuss the application and take a vote to take an action. All members of the public will have a chance to speak if you wish, even if you didn't sign up from the homepage beforehand. Once those who have sent in advance have spoken, we'll call anybody else after that. If you've joined the Zoom meeting by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, your mailing address, and the docket number in the chat box in the Zoom meeting. Each person who is, who is sent up that way, when we ask you to speak, you can unmute from Zoom. Like you'll be nominated into being a participant. And then we'll also allow you to speak and you can join video if you wish at that time. Once you finish speaking, you can go back on mute and then the staff will place you back as an attendee out of the participant list. If you've joined today by phone, I don't think we have anybody joined by phone, but if they are, you can raise your hand during the meeting by pressing star nine after we've gone through the names that we have. At that point, we would unmute you and call on you to make your comment. Now, when it's your turn to do that, you'll have to press star six to unmute yourself. Also check your own phone, your cellphone, to make sure you haven't muted yourself in the phone app of your phone. It's a complicated sentence. Once you're unmuted, either from your computer or the phone, please state your name and your address for the record before providing your comment. Anybody wishes to speak will be given three minutes to speak and a timer will beep at the end of your speaking time, which you'll be able to hear over the phone. If there are groups that wish to speak together, you can pool time up to three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes total. You have to provide the names and addresses of the other people, up to three others for a total of four besides yourself, who have to be in attendance and are donating their time to you. Anyone who's pulling time will have to attend the virtual hearing and be called in so we can verify their presence as we would an in-person hearing when we're in the conference room. We ask you please to not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. It's only to be used for speaker signup. Remain on mute when possible. If there's any background noise, we'll have to mute your line. And we ask the public to not attempt to share screens during the presentation or their comments. The applicant will be allowed to have a presentation and if you can have your presentation pulled up, ready to go. When I announce it's time for you to speak, you're welcome to present at that time. I think that's it for the comments. We'll now open the public hearing. So this is a public hearing for docket number SU-20-0007, the Valtech Multiple Principal Uses application. We'll hear from staff first. I think Rainey is here to speak and then we'll start with a staff report and go through the rest of the process. So Rainey, over to you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rainey Ott with Community Planning and Permitting. I'm going to share my screen. And get Zoom out of the way. Okay, everyone should be able to see this now. All right. So this is SU-200007, Valtech Multiple Principal Uses at 1779 Valtech Lane. We are located on the north side of Arapahoe, which is also State Highway 7, just east of the city of Boulder between 63rd and 75th. The owner is Terrence Gallagher. The applicant is Josh Rutherford with Kushmasters and the agent is Peter Carey. The subject property is point, is a .9 acre platted lot in the Valtech Industrial Subdivision in the General Industrial Zoning District and an approximately 14,400 square foot warehouse structure is, and also its parking lot, are currently on the site and the structure is occupied by two tenants, which are McLean Forge in Unit 1 and SGS in Unit 2. The applicant proposes to add a third principal use in addition to those two in Unit 2. And this request is to consider all three of those principal uses. So a few details. The existing warehouse is divided into three units. Units 1 and 2 are approximately 6,000 square feet and Unit 3 is about 2,400 square feet. Unit 1 is currently occupied by McLean Forge, which is a machine shop that manufactures and repairs custom metalwork such as railings and art. Unit 3 is occupied by the Coconut Fiber Milling and Treading Company, SGS, which is considered a light industrial use. And then Unit 2 is proposed to be occupied by a marijuana establishment called Kushmasters. McLean Forge operates 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and has up to five employees on site at any given time. Walk-in customers are welcome, but most interactions occur by appointment or off-site at project locations. Kushmasters is a marijuana infused product manufacturer that proposes to operate mainly Monday through Friday from 5:30 AM to 10:00 PM and also on weekends from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Snapping consists of 15 employees with 12 people on site maximum at any given time. And Kushmasters also proposes manufacturing high-end edibles and extracts, starting from the raw cannabis plant using both hydrocarbon and solventless extraction methods. No growing of cannabis plants is proposed on site. And the products will be produced for retail sale on site and through a delivery service. In order to hold a state license for delivery, a marijuana establishment must also hold a license for on-site retail sales. But per the applicant, walk-in customer traffic will be relatively low at this location with deliveries making up around 75% of their total sales. SGS is not open to the public and does not keep regular hours. One employee comes in approximately twice each week, bringing with them the raw products and the materials going into the process and then after processing, leaving with the finished product. Here's an aerial of the subject property showing the existing warehouse and parking lot. The cul-de-sac of Valtech Lane is located immediately north and can be utilized as an emergency turnaround since it's within 150 feet of the structure. Also of note is the adjacent lot to the south, for which there is a shared parking agreement for additional spaces needed on the subject property. Only a sliver of agricultural land of local significance is located on the subject property and no other environmental resources were identified. However, the property is located within a subdivision platted for the purpose of allowing industrial uses and is not suitable for agricultural use under the existing conditions. Staff does not otherwise find any conflicts with the Conference of Plan since the property is in a uniquely urban industrial setting located close to the incorporated areas, services, and infrastructure to serve all three uses. Public lands map. The property is located adjacent to Legion Park County Open Space. With, but the public trail and observation area are located 50 to 60 feet higher in elevation than the subject property so that only the roof of the warehouse and the parking lot would be visible. No additional floor area is proposed and staff does not anticipate that the two new exterior doors proposed with the request would result in a negative visual impact. No new exterior lighting was included either, but staff recommends requiring that all newer replacement lighting be downlit and fully shielded to prevent undue visual impacts. Here's the site plan showing 19 vehicle parking spaces total, with most along the northern property boundary and three more at the southeast corner of the warehouse. There's also an optional hammerhead for emergency vehicles to the north of the building and the absorption field for the existing onsite wastewater treatment system is east of the building. Here's the overall floor plan for the three units on the upper right. And then the detailed floor planet scene here is for the proposed marijuana establishment in Unit 2. It's broken into four major areas, all with some level of access restriction. Manufacturing is in blue, deliveries in green, offices in white, and then the onsite retail in the pinkish-orange color. Some site photos. So here we're looking northwest from the main entrance of Valtech Lane at the east elevation of the warehouse where McLean Forge is located. You can see three of the parking spaces proposed on the southeast corner of the building. And then there's also some metal artwork on top of the existing absorption field, which must be removed per the referral response from Public Health and staff recommends a condition of approval to that effect. Here we're looking north at the existing parking spaces, some of which are currently being used to store materials. The applicant noted that all of this will be removed. And looking southwest at the McLean Forge unit on the far left, SGS on the far right, and the unit proposed to be occupied by Kushmasters in the corner. And then here's inside the Kushmasters unit. The picture on the left is looking into the southwest corner where the extraction process will take place. And this is the, the location farthest away from the other two neighboring units. And then the picture on the right is looking from that back corner back to the northeast portion of the unit, which adjoins McLean. And here we're looking at the rear or south side of the Kushmasters and McLean units. Legion Hill Open Space is uphill to the left in this picture. A new man door is proposed right to, to the right of this garage door. And then this is the west side of the Kushmasters and SGS units. And there's also a new door proposed on this side of the building. This application was sent out to the typical referral agencies and departments. Mount, some responses of note that we received came from the Fire Protection District. Mountain View responded with several concerns regarding the marijuana establishment. Their main concerns are emergency water supply, ventilation, flammable gas monitoring, transfill container proximity to structures, locks and access control, and emergency access conflicts with customer parking. From the Development Review Team, Access and Engineering, they found that legal access to the subject property is demonstrated. They also agreed with the findings of the pre-application methodology statement and have no concerns regarding traffic volume produced by the three uses. The response also noted that the Valtech Lane cul-de-sac could be used as an emergency turnaround and requested the applicant submit a parking layout at permitting that complies with the multimodal transportation standards, including for bicycle parking. We did not receive any public comments. Some special use criteria of note, number seven, that it will support a multimodal transportation system and not result in traffic hazards. The existing parking lot on site has room for 19 vehicle spaces total. For SGS and McLean Forge, the land use code requires a minimum of one space per 500 square feet. And for Kushmasters, the code requires one space per 200 square feet. Based on the floor area occupied by each tenant with the existing 14,400 square foot warehouse, 47 vehicle parking spaces would be required and one designated loading space is also required per the code. However, the additional provisions for parking under Article 4-516V state, "Deviating from the number of required automotive parking spaces as described in each use classification may be appropriate based on the specific circumstances of a proposal." Based on the information submitted in the application materials, the total number of employees that would be on site at any given time for the three uses is 17 people. That's five for McLean, none for SGS, and 12 for Kushmasters. As previously discussed, SGS is not open to the public and walk-in customer traffic is expected to be low for both Kushmasters and McLean. Given the operational nature of the proposed uses and that public transportation is available nearby, staff finds the proposed parking of 19 spaces on site to be adequate. To ensure no parking conflicts arise, staff recommends requiring the applicant to designate a minimum of two customer parking spaces, one for Kushmasters and one for McLean Forge, and one loading space for deliveries on site. Staff also recommends requiring that the applicant submit a shared parking agreement for the additional employee parking needed, one space at a minimum, as well as an updated parking plan per the comments received by Access and Engineering. With the recommended conditions of approval, staff finds this criterion can be met. Number 10. Will not otherwise be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare. The referral response from Mountain View Fire Protection District noted several concerns regarding the marijuana establishment, given the nature of the proposed extraction methods. And those include emergency water supply, ventilation, flammable gas monitoring, transfill location proximity to, to structures, plant material storage, locks and access control, and emergency access conflicts with customer parking. As stated previously, the Valtech Lane cul-de-sac can be utilized as an emergency turnaround and staff is recommending a condition of approval that the cul-de-sac must remain clear for that purpose. To ensure each of the other issues is adequately addressed, staff recommends a condition of approval requiring final approval from Mountain View for plans related to these concerns, as well as their approval of the transfill container location prior to issuance of any permits. According to the applicant, an emergency water supply located on the adjacent property across Valtech Lane is available for use in case of a fire on the subject property, but no evidence was submitted to support this. And so staff recommends requiring the applicant to submit evidence of an adequate emergency water supply prior to issuance of any permits. With the recommended conditions, staff finds this criterion can be met. And number 11. That it will be an appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental, and societal needs. The application materials indicate that a take-back program for the product packaging used for the marijuana establishment will be established in the future once the retail component is operational. To reduce packaging waste, staff recommends requiring either that A, the applicant establish a take-back program for their product packaging, or B, use recyclable or compostable packaging only within one year of operating the retail operation. And so with the recommended condition, staff finds the proposal strikes an appropriate balance between current societal and economic needs and the conservation and efficient use of resources for the future. And so with that, Community Planning and Permitting staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval for docket SU-200007, Valtech Multiple Principal Uses, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from the commissioners?
I have a few questions.
Yeah, go for it. If you can state your name, Dave.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Shu. So with the parking spots, you mentioned that 17 is the number of employees from McLean and Kushmasters and zero is allocated to SGS. In the worst-case scenario, when, if everyone drives in, we'll have 17 from Kushmasters and McLean. Where does that, well, and one of those spaces is handicapped. Where does the person from SGS park?
So with discussions among staff, including the Access and Engineering staff, we didn't think that twice per week was really going to necessitate its own parking space. And the shared parking agreement with the property to the south could provide additional parking more than just one. So there could be an opportunity there and if the Planning Commission thinks that we need to make that a condition of approval, that there is that extra parking space reserved, we can, we can do that. There's also on-street parking available on Valtech Lane. And we do not want to encourage on-street parking. And there is a condition of approval that no customers can use on-street parking for any of these uses. But we did not preclude employees from using that on-street parking.
Okay. This is Commissioner Shu again. With the shared agreement, that is not included in the packet, right? The shared parking agreement. I saw something that was more like an easement to cross the property into those parking spaces, but I didn't see anything about a shared parking agreement.
I believe there is a one-page written shared parking agreement in the application materials, but the applicant can also speak further to that.
Okay, and then with the shared parking agreement, is there enough parking in the property to the south that they can afford one or two, however many spaces?
It appears so from aerials, but we do not have much information about the uses on that site. But we could make sure that that is all buttoned up before accepting a shared parking agreement.
Okay, and last parking question from me. Bike parking was mentioned. Is there a plan for where those would be?
The applicant will have to provide a certain number of bicycle parking spaces somewhere on the site. They didn't identify a location, but we think that there is enough room for them in addition to the other parking on site. If you're looking for more information about bicycle parking, I would ask that Amelia Willetts answer questions about that since she is on for Access and Engineering staff.
Hi, Commissioners. This is Amelia Willetts, Community Planning and Permitting, Access and Engineering. As a part of our multimodal transportation standards, for commercial purposes, 10% of vehicle parking needs to be represented on-site as bicycle parking. And so we simply apply that condition and educate the applicant how, what percentage of parking that they would be required to represent on-site. For 19 parking spaces, we would request two bicycle parking spots. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner McMillan, one question with regards to the retail use. Is retail as, as a use in and of itself, I understand here it's kind of subordinate to the manufacturing, but is, is retail permitted as a use in this zoning district?
Retail is permitted as part of the marijuana establishment use and other incidental sales for the other uses are also permitted in the general industrial zoning district.
Got it. And do they need to maintain some sort of proportion? Like, or just be less than the total? Or how does it work? How does it stay, I guess, subordinate to industrial in the eyes of the code?
I, I think. I, I think the code is silent on that. It doesn't require them to have a retail component of a certain percentage of their business.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Libby, I had one question about the third condition around the packaging, the recyclable or take-back program for packaging. I just haven't seen a condition like that before. I'm just interested whether that's a commonly or previously applied condition for similar applications or something new in this case.
That is a new condition. I don't believe we have asked for a condition like that before. But just being aware of how big packaging is in the marijuana industry and how big of a waste that is coming out of that industry, we wanted to specifically speak to it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Fitch, I had the same question, and I guess a concern about whether we simply apply it in interpretation to previous practice, or we have some discussion of whether to specify a requirement like that that we have not applied previously.
Yes, I might suggest we keep that for discussion, but I'm happy to discuss that further. I agree.
Okay.
This is Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director. I would just offer that, or offer a reminder that these are all site-specific analyses. So if you, you know, just because it hasn't been applied to a previous docket doesn't mean it can't be applied here if you were to relate it to one of the criteria and find that it was necessary. These are all site-specific analyses.
Thank you, Kim. Any, any further questions?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. With regards to the, the take-back program, is there any, any verification that's, you know, that says after one year, how does that actually get verified that that's happened?
We could ask for a report from the applicant that they submit that within one year. Otherwise, it would technically be a violation of their special use approval that could be enforced upon.
And just out of curiosity, does the, does the county's like system have something where, you know, you would put in, you would put in that requirement, and then somebody would get a reminder after one year that says, hey, these guys are in violation, or how does that work?
The licensing team has a licensing program that tracks the marijuana licenses. And so I believe we could probably loop it into that, but I would need to discuss it with licensing staff.
Great, thanks. Any further questions?
Sorry, following up my question, this is Commissioner McMillan. So with, with regards to the retail, are they, if this were to be approved, this, this special use, are they confined to the retail which they've shown or represented in this application? Ask the question hypothetically to say, let's say they wanted to expand their retail operation inside of this space, could they do that? Or would they have to come back and amend their special review use?
I believe that they would need to come back and, and ask for a modification to increase the floor area that's dedicated to the retail if that had other associated impacts. But through a modification review, staff would look at whether or not that increase was just swapping floor area, or if there were other impacts associated with it.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, here nothing further. I can close our questions for now. Is the applicant here interested in presenting?
Yes, I am. Josh Rutherford here on behalf of Kushmasters. Thank you for the time, Commission, Commissioners, and I have a small presentation for the commission today.
Let me just say your address, please, Josh, and then we'll be good.
Yes, my address is nine five five four Joyce Way, Arvada, Colorado, eight triple zero seven. And talking about docket number SU dash two zero dash zero 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 seven off Valtech Lane seventeen seventy-nine. And I am the owner of Kushmasters. We've been in business for, since two thousand fourteen in Boulder County. We have a existing manufacturing license in the same district. This is an expansion facility for us. We've been servicing Boulder County successfully, you know, since that time, without any violations or, you know, issues associated with it. So let me get into my presentation here. How's that look for everybody? Good, perfect. So Rainy went over a lot of this, the location seventeen seventy-nine. You know, it's a special review, zero point nine acre parcel. Terry Gallagher is the owner of this property, as well as the adjacent property that we are talking about with the parking requirements. So the parking requirements, the, it is the same owner. So getting that agreement to satisfy the commission, I don't think is going to be a problem.
Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm not able to see you changing the slides. Is anybody else able to see that? Let's just try to share again. I, I think when you went to full screen, it, it stopped sharing or got stuck on the.
Oh, yeah, I assumed you just hadn't switched slides, so I'm not seeing a change either.
How's that?
Yeah, it looks good. Thank you. Sorry for that.
Oh, sorry about that. Now I can't. That's really weird. Sorry about that. Hang on, let me get out of full screen mode here.
Yeah, no worries. I think if you kept it in the non-full screen, it was fine like that.
Yeah. Is that okay for everybody?
Yes.
Awesome. So we're committed to filling and exceeding the terms set by the commission today. We have, you know, created quite the reputation in the industry. I'm a sought-after expert in the industry. I speak on a lot of educational panels, IP panels, safety panels. And really, I'm all about education and pushing the industry forward and all of the safe and economical and environmental things in mind. So impact, environmental impact is definitely important to me. And I think that, you know, the take-back program is something that we can now offer with that retail component. You know, we've always tried to invest into recyclable packaging and low-impact protocols, and that's going to continue in this new facility. These are all the recommendations that Rainy went over. Eleven of them, I have read them thoroughly. I think that we can meet all of them without an issue, so I'm not going to go through each one of them specifically. I have a few that I'd like to address with the commission today. The fire and water accessibility concerns. As it was said earlier in today, we're in talks with the neighboring facility to get an agreement to satisfy the fire department in availability of a water source for firefighting water only. And there is a lot of other requirements like ventilation, transfill locations, and stuff like that that came up in concerns where those are all going to be able to be easily satisfied once they are able to see our building plans, as well as we hire pressure safety inspectors, which is a third-party engineering hygienist company that will certify all of our protocols and make sure that they are safe and abiding by regulation. We, you know, have never had an issue. We maintain great standing. We have yearly inspections from Boulder County currently in city building capacity and a fire department capacity. They come out yearly and tour my current facility, and I haven't had any issues since two thousand fourteen, since our existence. Going to environmental impact, you know, we are definitely happy to coordinate in finance recycling events. We've done that already in the past. We are committed to low-impact procedures, including special traps for solvents, low-impact sustainable packaging. And we definitely like to do a lot of charity give back. These were the other things in what Rainy discussed. And I just wanted to show the commission that, you know, I have read all of them, all of the ten requirements on here, and we definitely can agree to them and adhere to them. I also wanted to talk about the downward lights. If anything were to come up, you know, in putting in lights, they would definitely be downward facing. I'm sorry that the park, the bike parking was not in the original plan, but we definitely have adequate space for those two biking areas. That is all I had to share today. I'm happy to answer any questions or mute, whatever the commission wants.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I think we're good. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, the applicant is presented, so we'll move on now to public testimony. We have one person set up in advance. I gave the directions already in terms of unmuting, calling in from the phone, et cetera. We have few attendees on the meetings. I think we'll be fine on that. And so we'll start, actually, we have two people in the sign-up sheet. Again, we'll play a sound when your time has expired. You'll have three minutes. I'll remind you to introduce yourself with your full name and your address. On the timer will start at that point, and you'll know the sound when you hear it. Are we good, Rick, to go with the timer and all that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. So we'll start with Jeffrey Gard, and Richard Ludden will be after that, then we'll go to the public after that. So Jeffrey, feel free to start.
Thank you. I'm the attorney for Kushmasters. As Dale Case and others here know, I've worked with Boulder County since the very inception of both medical and recreational marijuana. I also represent the majority of other Boulder County licensed businesses. Mr. Rutherford's plan out here, I think, is a really good one. It's really a diverse and interesting idea where basically he's going to have everything that a manufacturer would need from start to finish and be able to do that in a really responsible and sustainable way. This is a fun project for me to work on, mainly because it's going to have this very interesting retail component, but not retail in the sense that you're used to. But it's going to be basically a retail, almost like an outlet store for his extract products, which is sort of unique in the industry. So it's going to be very low-impact because it'll be people that want to come there for that specific product, it's not sort of like your general dispensary. But this will also give him the ability, should the commissioners move forward with delivery, which is something that I've put in front of staff and in front of the county attorney's office to recommend here shortly, so we'll take that up. But should this all come together, this will be a really exciting opportunity for my client and also for the county to do something that's a little bit different. I think he is in a great position to meet all of these requirements. I think this building is really great, and I think Mr. Carey, the architect on this, did a good job putting everything together. So I think everybody should have a lot of confidence in this particular project. Although my client is certainly prepared to do the take-back and, and the stuff with regard to packaging, I, I did have a concern sort of generally about imposing new conditions on this business that aren't applied to anyone else. I know they said it's site-specific, but it's hard to imagine how this packaging requirement is really site-specific, given that he already operates the very same type of business, not more than a stone's throw away right there. And we have other manufacturers throughout the county that are doing this. So this is the kind of thing that I think, although he's committed to complying with this, I think it's something that you should take a hard look at, bringing new rules to bear in, in these types of situations, because again, I think that becomes a slippery slope for everyone going forward on these things, and it becomes sort of a signal where we can't really predict and control, because if, if he does carry other product lines there, he's not going to have control over what they, what the other people that are providing wholesale product to the store are, are doing with their packaging. We don't have that kind of, we can't sort of demand we'll only sell product that's going to comply with Boulder County's packaging requirements. So something, I think you should take a look at that and maybe consider removing that. But other than that, I think everybody should be very excited about this project. And again, we're committed to getting this done right away. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next on the sign-up sheet is Richard Ludden. And Richard, if you're here, I can see. Great, go ahead. If you, just say your name and address too, please.
Richard Ludden, I'm fifteen oh seven Old Tail Road, Boulder, eight oh three oh three. And I, I just wanted to call in. I'd heard about the facility going up. I just live around the corner from, from it. And, you know, I'm not in favor of facilities like this, you know, additional facilities like this being built in the area. Particularly that area being fairly close to the Rapaho Tech BDSMD facility around the corner from there, where a lot of kids are going in and out. And I guess, you know, my overall concern with the product in the industry is the effect that it's having on the kids in Boulder and kind of normalizing this idea that it's okay to, to have substance abuse as a kid. And I know that's, there's a lot of work being done on that around the state. That's my primary concern, that which addresses the, you know, detrimental to the health and welfare of the community and the type of facility that we're building. And we already have enough of these, and I know it's starting to, you know, for me, when I bike around town, it's almost like going through Richmond, Virginia sometimes when you're, you know, if you're in tobacco country. Now we're in, we're beginning to turn Boulder into something like that for marijuana, which I don't think is a great idea at all. Some of the specifics to the facility are the threats. I mean, I've read about explosions. I know there were some specific things that have happened up in the mountains with facilities that are doing this kind of extraction. And I, I've actually had an employee of mine who was involved in one of those and had, you know, seventy-five percent of his body with third-degree burns from being involved in an explosion around THC extraction. It's pretty dangerous stuff that they're dealing with. The vapors from the solvents that they're using, it's dangerous stuff. I don't know what kind of hearing. There's a lot of noise involved with that for the employees that are working around it. There's a lot of dust involved with cannabis. So it's a pretty, it's not as innocuous as it might seem to some folks. This extraction process and the use of butane and propane and high intense heat and pressure to create a product which is extremely high percentage of THC, extremely addictive, and also very dangerous for the users. So all of those, to me, you know, it does not pass muster when it comes to detrimental to the health or safety or welfare of what's happening in Boulder. And those are my concerns around it. I also read where there's something about delivery drivers. I, I have a federally regulated DOT transportation company, and we have a lot of delivery drivers, and my drivers are all tested, which is a requirement that people are drug-tested on a regular basis. And I don't know if this company would be doing that with their drivers as well, because driving while impaired on marijuana seems to be a growing problem, is a growing problem in states where it's legal, along with a lot of other issues that are coming up with these products as well. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I think that's everyone who's signed up on the list. Do we have anybody else in the Zoom meeting who would like to speak or on the phone? As a reminder, you can dial star nine if you're on the phone to raise your hand. Seeing none, Anna, you don't see anything, right?
This is Anna, owner of staff. No, I don't. Call for anyone to sign up in the chat. Chat is open if you'd like to speak.
Just give one more second for that. Great. Okay, are there any clarifying statements from staff on the comments?
No.
And any responses from the applicant to any comments or questions?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Hi, this is Leona James, Assistant County Attorney. I just wanted to make a note, but if you could formally close the public hearing, that would be great.
I was about to get it right for the first time in a while, and you preempted me, so I was about to do that. Now close the public hearings. Thank you, Leona. Okay, so we can move into our discussion. And any internal comments or move to a motion already?
This is Commissioner Gargano. I'd love to follow up with Rainy, if that's okay. Just if you could elaborate on, I know we have some things about great number of, of facilities like this within a certain area, distance from schools. I just, just based on the comment we heard, I'd like to have, hear a little bit more about that related to this.
So the location of this facility is outside of all of the required buffers for treatment facilities, schools. So the location of this facility is outside of all of the required buffers for treatment facilities, schools and other establishments. So it's not in conflict with any of those requirements.
And are there other facilities nearby at all? Or do we know how many other facilities are in the general area?
I believe there is one other facility within the general industrial zoning district right in this area. But they're not required to be setback from each other if they're both located in the general industrial zoning district.
This is Commissioner Shu. I wanted to follow up on the first public comment with the take back program. Why, why was this program suggested? I know it's regarding, you know, one of the especially reviews criteria. But, you know, why take that program versus using solar energy or composting, you know, waste? I guess, why, you know, why not just a holistic look at all their. You know, environmental impact and instead of just looking at packaging.
The take back program was first brought up to our attention by the applicant as part of the application. And so building off of that with sustainability goals in mind of reducing waste, especially that's associated with packaging. Their, their other equipment and stuff does a pretty good job of being efficient. And we didn't think about asking for solar panels or anything like that. But they still have to meet the energy requirements of the building code.
This is Kim Sanchez. If I could just add to that and maybe put a finer point on the actual criteria and that we think it relates to. It is the criteria languages that the use will establish an appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental. And societal needs by minimizing the consumption and inefficient use of energy materials, minerals, water, land and other finite resources. So that's where we're finding a nexus to require that condition of approval.
This Commissioner Bloomfield, it seems like there's a got, you know, sign on from the applicant. But also it seems like there's enough flexibility between a take back or composting or recycling. Ability, if I understood that correctly, that I feel pretty comfortable that they have enough flexibility to. To be able to meet it without undue hardship.
This Commissioner Libby, on this topic, I guess, my, my feeling is that this does seem like the first time it's being applied. And I think the argument for why it's being applied makes sense to me. But I think there's an opportunity to apply that at a policy level across other licensing forums that are happening for marijuana production, retail, et cetera. Not apply this whenever they happen to come through a special use process. So my, my preference would be that's a harder process, right, to get that applied as a licensing constraint or a, a new policy. This would be an easier piece to apply to this one example, but I, I feel like that's more suitable, just like we're not applying any conditions around delivery here, for example. Delivery would be handled through that process. It's not a component of special use. So I'm, I'm kind of also reticent to apply that here. Personally.
So this, this is Kim Sanchez, if I may. I do think it would be difficult for us to apply that as part of the licensing. Because it's not, it's not included in that currently. So I think if you were to want to include it, it would need to be a specific condition found to be relevant to this particular special use review. On a site specific basis. As far as the policy discussion, we can certainly engage in that discussion to find out. You know, if changes could be made, but currently that, that is not a part of the licensing program.
Any other discussion on that topic or others?
Perhaps just a question for staff. This is Commissioner McMillan. So outside of the SRU process, what, what other ways is this being applied? This, this take back program. How would someone or a company or a business be required to comply with those requirements?
Outside of the conditions of approval for this special use, I don't think on the county level, there is any requirement. Or any, anything about using a take back program for these types of establishments. The packaging requirements, I believe, are established at the state level. And it is an option that marijuana establishments can have a take back program.
Got it.
This Commissioner Gargano, just thinking about packaging. Is that some, just even outside of this, right, when we think about looking into that more policy wise? Can, can we have strict packaging and like sustainability packaging at the county level? Or does that have to be state level? Like what's the, are there opportunities, I guess, in a wider policy world?
So we can discuss whether there's a possibility from a wider policy level. I think that's a different discussion. I think at this point in time, really, you're, you're just trying to determine whether or not you think it's a condition that can be applied in this particular application. And again, as noted by Rainey, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was something that was offered by the applicant in the application materials. So we just simply incorporated that as a condition of approval. Although, as I stated, there is a tie in to, to the special use criteria.
This Commissioner Bloomfield. I definitely agree with what you're saying, Tim, about like, even though I said, I think, I think it can be easily met. It's a question of should it be required here? And like, do we want to get in the habit of. Having kind of one off requirements like this versus a much broader policy. So it's a tough call for me. I definitely like things to be a little bit cleaner than, than, you know, individual requirements. For individual projects.
Commissioner Fitch, my recommendation would really be just to remove the. Specific condition regarding the take back program. I think it's already a commitment of, of record. For this particular site specific on the part of the applicant, including he. Agreed as he listed out his response as the applicant to all of the conditions. It's, it's now a matter of. Of record. So I think we can take it out as a condition. So that we're not in the question of whether this is simply a one off for this particular application. I open to having the larger discussion about how we incorporate sustainability and packaging. But I think it's just a bad precedent to bring it up in this particular circumstance. And since he's already agreed to the condition. I would just recommend that we delete that one item and go ahead approving the rest of the proposal. I think the proposal itself is just fine.
Commissioner Libby, I agree with that, Sam, and I'd be happy with that approach.
Your boom field likewise.
This is Commissioner Neski. I just wanted to say, I think that it's a really thoughtful condition, particularly coming from the applicant. With his knowledge and the industry and the comments made by staff of, you know, seeing the, the impacts that a lot of this packaging has had in the community. But I do think as, as from a planning perspective, to have it as a broad, broader topic about topic, talking about packaging and sustainability. And having that option of more take back programs going forward. So I think that's really thoughtful. I like that this is sort of kicking off the discussion and that it was already presented by the applicant as something that's, that they're already considering. So I think going forward with your suggestion of the applicant committing to it. But removing it from the conditions sounds agreeable to me. Thank you.
So this is Commissioner Fitch. That particular item is a condition of approval number three. So I would move. Approval, well, approval as presented by staff for, to go back to. But to proceed with approval for this to the county commissioners. With the removal of condition three and renumbering of the remaining conditions.
This is Commissioner Gargano. So if we remove it from this, then we're making a separate request of staff to explore this as a broader policy. Because I really, yeah, I don't want to lose it.
Now, that's a separate question.
Yeah, let's continue discussion, Commissioner Libby, I guess, if we're not at that point yet. At least what I, what my perspective would be is. The planning commission only views a marijuana facility request like this under special use. We don't, you know, approve retail or other growing operations or anything else. And so we wouldn't see these very often to reapply the condition in the future. My personal reticence is to apply unique conditions to things we don't see very often. I think we're saying both, it is a value. I totally agree with what Melanie said. It's a very good and thoughtful thing to be looking at. What, what Kim said was that they'd be happy to look at, you know, if there are opportunities to guide policies in this area, there may not be that many options. So that may be a dead end. I don't know that we can guarantee there's much progress that can be made there, but they're offering to do that as a follow up to this. That's my understanding. If we remove it, it would still be discussed further and looked at as an opportunity, but it can also be kept up to discuss.
Commissioners, I, I think that you don't, you, you certainly can, but you at this point don't need to give us formal direction to have the discussion. In the licensing context. I think this is an interesting question and we plan to do that regardless. Thank you for, for raising it as an issue, though.
This is Commissioner Shu. I don't necessarily object to the amendment. But I do think that we do have authority under four, six, oh, one, criteria 11 to have packaging. Requirements if we wanted to. It is a land use, special use. So I think it falls under our authority, but I understand why people might not want it. I do want to comment that. For presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, I'd like to see an actual park or I'd like. There to be an actual parking agreement. I was looking through the packet. The agreement that's titled agreement for overflow parking between properties doesn't actually guarantee any spaces. It just says one property can cross. Or vehicles can cross the other property to get to the parking spaces on the south side. It doesn't say that there's any cross parking between the two properties. The applicant did agree that they would allow that space. But just want to highlight for staff that that agreement is not reflected in the packet.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I just wanted to address one of Mr. Letton's comments about safety. I'm not an expert. I don't probably think any of us are, except for the applicant on these sorts of processes. But I do feel like the Mountview Fire Protection District review of the. Of the proposal, you know, they, they responded with several concerns. And I do feel like they're doing, doing their job and I'm relying on them to make sure that, you know, this is going to be a safe operation. The applicant did also indicate that, you know, they haven't had any safety violations or anything like that. If we take him at his word, then I feel pretty good going forward as far as the safety issue.
Any further comments?
Just one, and I think this is Commissioner McMillan mostly for the record. I asked a lot of questions about retail because I think. There's a potential in these cases for this to be a really entirely different proposal if it's a retail establishment. And with regards to parking, Commissioner Shu raised, or access or traffic. And so I raise those questions to say, you know. This can this thing morph into a retail operation, which I don't think we are approving today, a primary. I know we're not approving a primary retail operation. So I think just for the record, I just like to say that, you know, I, I assume, my assumption is that the retail activity will be limited to what is shown in the current. Special review and outlined, and that that'll be a piece of record for the future. Should there be a change in the way that this property operates? I think with that clarification, I'm okay moving forward with a motion. I could go either way with removing or leaving. Condition of approval number three. I think it's a, Commissioner Neshki put it a really thoughtful thing. I'd like to see it more broadly applied, but that's a discussion for a different day, I think. So given that, that the applicant is volunteered to comply with that, I'd be okay leaving it in. I'd also be fine taking it out because it might set a precedent that I'm not ready to move forward with. So I, I will go with the, the group on that one. I'm not going to die on that hill. So those are my comments. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Gargano. I'd prefer to leave it in. I think, again, the applicant's okay with it. It's something we want. It's within our purview. I think it makes sense to leave it.
This is Commissioner Neski. I'm going to second that as well, particularly because they volunteered it. And it's something that does go along with our environmental and sustainability concerns. And it, it would be great for them to lead by example with this program and hopefully encourage more programs like this, not just in this industry, but in others.
This is Commissioner Shu. I think I agree with Commissioners McMillan, Gargano and Neski. And I do have a preference for leaving it in, but again, won't object if it's removed.
Okay, do we have a motion? I, I think, Commissioner Libby, I'm happy to go along. Listen, if you want to make a motion towards that. I, I think I've stated my concerns and it's totally to your point within our rights and the. It's the staff recommendation, so we should go with that if you want to.
I just lost the language, so I have to go find it.
I can, I can do, I can do it. You have it? Okay, I move that the Board of the Planning Commissioners conditionally approve and recommend to the Board of County Commissioners conditional approval. Of docket SU dash 20 dash 0007, the Veltec multiple principal uses. Application with the 11 conditions listed in the staff report.
And I'll second that, Commissioner, this Commissioner, you know.
Okay, with a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Sam Libby, I, Gavin McMillan.
Hi.
Dave Shu.
Hi.
Melanie Neski.
Hi.
Eason Gargano.
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
And Sam Fitch.
Hi.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. As that is our only docket item today, that is the end of our meeting. And I thank you all for your time. Thank you to public for your comments, to staff for your feedback. I look forward to seeing you next month. And I'll ask for motion to adjourn from somebody on the commission.
Move to adjourn.
And I'll second. Love it. We could do a voice vote of approval. I for that. I thank you all. I don't have a gavel, but this is, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.